Roll call please.
Chair Hamadi.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
And Nguyen.
Commissioner Tran.
Ah, here.
Commissioner Wolpert.
I'm here.
Chair, you have a quorum with all members present.
Great. Please join me in our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the name of liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any report from the planning secretary?
Chair, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Go to number four, ex parte communication. This section.
Chairman, we did on item number three, I'm sorry, on late communications, we did receive a late communication. It was on everybody's, it was on the dais on front of your seat.
Yeah, I didn't have a chance to read it. Yeah, something of that.
We can discuss it when we get to that item.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we'll go to number four, ex parte communication. Anything? Anything? Okay, we'll go to number five, special presentation. None. Next one, oral communication. This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the planning commission on matters of public interest which pertain to this city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the planning commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless extended by a majority vote of the planning commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the planning commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the form to the planning commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time and state your name and city of residence for the record. Do we have any speakers?
Chair, I have no speakers.
Okay, we'll close the oral communication. We'll go to the approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion for approval with one change on page four of the minutes. I think it's paragraph, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven maybe where it says Chair Wolpert. That should just be stricken and put Commissioner Wolpert. They left the wrong nomenclature there for myself.
Approval of minute for the regular meeting of October twenty twenty first twenty twenty five and the cancellation of the regular meeting of October fifteenth twenty twenty five. You made the motion already? A second. Roll call.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Wolpert, seconded by Chair Hamadi, to approve the regular meeting minutes of October first twenty twenty five with, as amended, and the minutes of cancellation for meeting of October fifteenth twenty twenty five. I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Ah, yes.
Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
We'll go into the next, number eight, public hearing. Okay. Anyone wishes, oh, let's see here first, public hearings, case number... Okay. Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the planning commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee will have twelve minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The planning commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed a lot of time or may ask for a speaker to return to answer additional questions. Now, we move to case number eight point one, case number twenty twenty four dash zero two two seven. Call on staff.
Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. Ken Fickelman, Principal Planner for the City, and we are here tonight for case number twenty twenty five dash zero two two seven. That is a request to amend chapter seventeen point six four zero appeals of the Westminster Municipal Code. For background, chapter seventeen point six four zero lays out the procedures and needed applications for an appeal of a previously approved project by either a director or the planning commission. If a planning commission or council member wishes to appeal, they currently have to follow these same standards that are found in that chapter that a resident or applicant would use to appeal. During this, in this application, a planning commissioner or council member must provide reason for the appeal. This, providing this reason creates a bias before facts and evidence are heard and could disqualify a planning commissioner or city council member from being able to hear a public or an appeal item. With that in mind, staff is looking to remove the appearance of bias from the appeal process. We have added a section called call for review to the appeals section. This allows a planning commissioner or council member to initiate a review without providing a reason. No bias is introduced. There would be no reason for a commissioner or council member to have to recuse themselves. Staff has also made additional changes to clean up the rest of the appeals chapter, but none of these, none of these changes are substantive. I could not say that word right now, and they don't change the meaning of the chapter. With that, this is not a project per sequa, and staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of case number twenty twenty five dash zero two two seven to the city council. That's our presentation. We're here to answer any questions.
Do any of the commissioners have any questions? None? Any motion?
I have a question. So, on eight point one, you didn't provide any red line or blue line or changes in the actual code. We didn't receive what the, it wasn't very clear what the amendments are going to be. Can you be a little bit more specific on what is being amended in the code?
Yeah, and the reason we didn't produce the blue line to red line copy is because we're repealing and re-adopting. So, the code is clean at that point because we, it's a total repeal and re-adoption. Okay, if you look at the exhibits, the majority of the changes are found at the beginning of exhibit A. Those will be under seventeen point six four zero point zero one zero, call for review. Basically, what we're doing is the appeals process lays, as is currently, lays out a application procedure that is the same for applicants, residents, commissioners, the council members, that if they wish to appeal, they have to state a reason for appeal. Stating a reason for appeal by and in itself can lead to bias. Like, let's say you, like, the commission or the council when they reheard the alcohol licenses. If they would have said in their appeal, I think this was a bad decision, they're instantly showing that they are biased against the commission's recommendation, and that could lead to them having to recuse themselves from the hearing. They're supposed to wait, you're supposed to enter a hearing unbiased, wait for the presentation, all facts and evidence to be presented before you form an opinion. So, what we're doing is taking that out. We're introducing the call for review. That will allow Commissioner, council member to appeal. You don't have to state a reason for the appeal. You just simply have to say, I wish to review project A. Since you're not stating an opinion on why it should be reviewed, you're not introducing any bias, and you can hear the, you can be a part of the hearing without having to worry about recusal. That is, that is the change we're making right now. We are trying to give you guys a clear path where you will not have to recuse yourself because you wanted to appeal an item.
So, the rest of seventeen dot six forty is word for word verbatim the same?
No, there are some minor changes, but there's nothing that affects, it's cleanup. There's nothing that affects the rest of how the rest of the chapter operated.
Okay, so six forty dot oh one oh, you entered section C. Is that correct? Call for review to be treated as repeal or as appeal?
Correct. Six, six four zero point one, zero one zero is completely new. That is, that is the only section that was added in its entirety. Everything else, like, we had to change appeals of decisions to remove council members and commissioners from that. And there were some other cleanup items, but nothing that affects the rest of the chapter, and it will operate exactly the same. The call for review is what is new.
Anyone else? We can open the public hearing. Do we have anyone to speak on this item?
Chair, I have no speakers.
We can close the public hearing. Any motion?
I'd move to approve as recommended.
A second. Roll call.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Chair Hamadi, for the planning commission to recommend approval of case number two zero two five dash zero two two seven to the city council and adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, Recommending That the City Council Approve a Zoning Text Amendment, Case Number Two Zero Two Five Dash Zero Two Two Seven, Repealing and Re-Adopting Chapter Seventeen Point Six Four Zero of the Westminster Municipal Code to Provide for a Call for Review Procedure for the City Council and Planning Commission in Making Other Minor Amendments." I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran? Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Go next item, eight point two, case number twenty twenty four zero two two three. Uh, staff.
Good evening, Chair Hamadi and fellow planning commissioners. My name is Alice, Associate Planner. Tonight, I will be presenting case twenty twenty five dash zero two two three, which is a zoning text amendment to our density bonus code sections in order to comply with state law. The California Density Bonus Law was first enacted in nineteen seventy nine. It allows developers to build more housing units, or in other words, higher densities than what the zoning allows, if a certain amount of affordable housing or senior housing is provided. The developers must set aside the units to be deed restricted to very low, low, and/or moderate income household categories. Over time, the density bonus law evolved to encourage affordable housing development. It allowed higher percentages of density bonus and incentives in addition to the ability to stack. The density bonus is granted on a sliding scale. The greater amount of units and the lower the income level served, the greater the density bonus that's granted. The developers may also request for concessions and waivers. Concessions and waivers allow developers to deviate from the city's development or design standards when providing affordable housing. The city's current density bonus law was adopted in twenty ten. Our code no longer complies with state law and requires a code update. On February fifth of this year, the planning commission initiated this zoning text amendment. This section of the zoning text amendment will repeal and re-adopt chapter seventeen point five seven zero, which is the density bonus section. It also amends two other sections of the code, one of which pertains to review authority for the permits and entitlements, and the other is the definitions section. These two sections are being amended to ensure consistency between these sections and the proposed density bonus chapter. We are also adopting state law by reference in the density bonus code. I will now go over several key changes we're proposing for chapter seventeen point five seven zero. One major change is that we are changing the review authority or the process and eliminate the need for findings. Our current code requires that the city council approve a density bonus, followed by the planning commission's recommendation. It lists required findings for approval. Since the city must approve a density bonus if they, if the developers meet the density bonus requirements, these actions are dated and is inconsistent with state law. The proposed code will be changed to state that the density bonus will be considered and approved by the review authority for the housing project. So, if the housing project requires staff-level review, then the density bonus will also be approved by staff. We're also eliminating the section on findings. Another major change is that we will be adding a development, development requirement section. Most of these requirements are created to ensure that the affordable units are provided similarly to market rate units. For example, affordable units must be constructed concurrently with market rate units, so the developers can't develop the market rate units first, and then there's a lag in developing the affordable units, unless the developer or the approving body agree on an alternative schedule. The affordable units must have the same amenities as the market rate units. The affordable units should have equal access to all onsite amenities, just as the market rate units do. And if the project contains for sale units, then the affordable units must also be for sale. And lastly, our code update will also clarify some little requirements and procedures. Currently, our code provides general information about the application process and procedures and refers to our application packet. However, our proposed code will be more specific. We will add an application content section that lists specific information that's required from the applicant for the density bonus. For example, the number, percentage, and income level of affordable units must be provided. This project is categorically exempt from sequa per the common sense exemption. The proposed text amendments are not for any specific project, therefore will have no effect on the environment. Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending approval of case twenty twenty five dash oh two two three to the city council. I also wanted to note that we did receive one public comment, and that has been provided to the commission. In addition, we are requesting for two minor changes and for that to be read in record. The first one is in our exhibit for the ordinance on page three in the chapter seventeen point five seven zero, zero point oh one oh. In the purpose section, we would like to change the word providing to provides. And then on page eight.
Excuse me, Alice, excuse me, Alice, could you, where is that section that we want to take a look at there?
Yes, in the exhibit A in the ordinance on page three.
Page three.
Mm-hmm, in chapter seventeen point five seven zero, the density bonus code section, right in the beginning, where it says seventeen point five seven zero point oh one oh with a purpose. There's a word that says providing. We would like to change that to provides. And then on page eight, which is the definitions section. It's, so seventeen point seven hundred point oh one oh. There is a definition for extremely low-income households, and it states, it quotes, makes reference to section five oh one five zero of the California Health and Safety Code. We just need to swap a couple of those numbers to, it should state section five zero one zero five.
So, Terry was correct.
We're actually citing a different section than she did. All that happened is when it was getting typed, somebody just transposed two numbers. So, instead of hitting zero five, keep adding too fast and hit five zero.
But we should be grateful that she caught it for her, you know?
It wouldn't have affected us because state law would still apply.
Okay.
And those types of changes can always be fixed clerical errors for, in your code. But, yes, thank you for, Terry, for recognizing that. The reason we're citing to one oh five and not one oh six is one oh five defines very low income, very low income by definition refers to extremely low, and then cross-references the section Terry says.
Okay, great.
And this concludes my presentation.
Thanks. Okay, any, the commissioner have anything to speak, to say?
Yes, yeah, I have a question. In the requirements section, which was added, it states the exterior design and construction of the affordable dwelling units shall be consistent with the exterior design and construction of the total project development. So, hypothetical situation, so let's say the, the total development has, most of the units in the development have tile roofs, or let's say all of the non-affordable units have tile roofs. Can you require tile roofs for the affordable units?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the beginning seventeen five hundred dot oh one oh and adjusting the review authority. What is currently state law on the review authority of affordable density bonus projects?
So, we are changing to be compatible state law. State law says that we cannot take a density bonus project to a body higher than would hear the project regardless. So, that's, our code is currently out of step with state law. We are changing it to be in step with state law.
Okay, so, in other words, it's going to be ministerially stamped at the counter through planning where there's no public interaction, no public comment, no open public hearing, no review by any other body?
Only?
Only if that project would, wouldn't have required in the first place. So, if it's a, if it's a six-unit apartment complex, correct, that would be ministerial. It would not be over the counter. We would do a full review, but it would be at staff level. If it was a tract map, since the tract map would still go to either planning commissioner council, the review of that would, density bonus would still go to planning commissioner council. So, the review will go for density bonus to whatever body would hear the highest level of that project.
What state law and case law has said is that you cannot require any additional steps to give a density bonus that are otherwise required for approval of the project itself.
Okay, what if you had a public hearing that wasn't required for approval? Hey, by the way, guys, here's what we approved at the counter. Just want to let the public know that this is, this project has been approved, and we can have it as a public hearing item where the public could speak on that item.
We couldn't have a public hearing on it? We're not allowed to have any, because that, a public hearing means that we are calling the project into a hearing and debating the project. We could give you an update of any projects as part of a meeting that were approved like that, but it wouldn't be a hearing. It'd be through other business.
But if it was part of an agenda item on a planning commission or a city council, the public could comment on oral communication, correct?
Correct.
Okay, that would be something that we can discuss later, but it seems like, I know California law states that we want to keep all this stuff under wraps where the public has no visibility to it. I don't think that's very good. I think as a city, we could do much better and try to at least get those projects in public view so that the public can know what's coming down their neighborhoods, especially in light of SB seventy nine that was just passed and signed into law, where you could take anyone, R one zone property and build a seven-story building on it for the most case. I mean, we can discuss that law when we get around to it, but those could be affordable housing units, and next thing you know, there's a seven-story building being built next to a residence house in Westminster with no approval, no public comment, no nothing. And I don't think that's very wise for our residents. I, I think we need to have maybe some mechanism built in. But if state law says that we can't do a review authority, could we write it into our code that says those things approved by the planning department need to be brought into an agendized item in the planning commission?
That would likely run afoul of state law on something where we are now limited to require to ministerially approve certain projects.
I don't.
Over the counter. State law has limited what you can have a hearing on and what discretion you have.
But we could, we could essentially write into the code saying affordable units are to be mentioned at the commission meetings when they're approved.
So, we actually couldn't because state law says we cannot treat an affordable project any different than a normal project. So, we can't, we can't call out specifically an affordable project unless we're calling out every other project we would approve. We can't take any step that would treat these projects differently than a normal project going to that same review authority.
Shouldn't we be updating the public on all projects? But that's another question, I guess.
And if I may, we actually do have a page on the planning page where we put all our development projects online from the minute they're submitted. So, if anybody in the public wants to check on, I mean, if it's a minor project, somebody doing an addition to their house or an ADU, we don't, we don't post those. But anything that comes in for development review, which is what most of these projects would go through if it was staff level, we do post those the minute they're, well, we post on the first of every month any new projects we get. So, and that list stays current. We don't take them off until the project is approved. And then even once it's approved, we have a separate webpage that is recently approved projects. So, we move them onto that recently approved. So, anybody from the public who wishes to see that list, it is on our webpage, and since it's the first week of November, November right now, we'll update it again by the end of this week.
I wonder how many people view that website?
We could actually find out. We have, we have metrics on it. It's not hidden. If you go to our planning page, it's in, there's two blue boxes right on the planning page, so we're not trying to, it's not hidden behind anything. And it is there for the public.
Can I have a question? On R one zone, if the size of the lot big enough, you got, do you guys allow seven units on it?
No, R one is single-family. The only way you can get multiple units right now is by using SB nine, where you can get up to four.
He says, he said seven now.
I think what Casey's referring to is SB- I think what Casey's referring to is SB seventy nine, is that the transit?
SB seventy nine is the transit and I'm, right now it does not apply in Orange County until you get the, that streetcar thing coming in. And I don't know that you have anything in Westminster that's going to trigger it within a half mile of a transit.
Yeah, and we do not. So we have the OC Project twenty forty plan or OCTA Project twenty forty plan. They have no transit stops that would qualify for that anywhere near Westminster. The nearest stops would be possibly the streetcar stops or the MetroLink stations.
So on R-one zone now we, you're allowed four units?
We allow four by SB nine, which can be two units, an ADU, and a junior ADU.
I see. Without subdividing the property?
Correct.
To the parcels now?
Correct. Could subdivide it, but then they get only two units on each parcel.
That would be different sizes if you subdivide the property?
Not necessarily.
No?
That, that all, because the lot coverage is what comes into play and that would be the same if it was subdivided or unsubdivided.
Same sizes will be on, on all of them.
Well, I mean, it would be dependent. Every project could have different sizes, but the.
Because if you have different parcel, you have different situation here.
Correct. Every parcel, well, most tracks, the parcels are similar size.
Okay.
But I mean, if you're talking about an area downtown where you get some different parcel sizes.
But let's say in R-one zone, they do subdivision, then they have the right to have two big units on each one.
Correct. That's SB nine. You get four units regardless with SB nine. You either get four units on one property or two units on each subdivided lot.
Wow. So he's correct then. If they, if the lot's only eight thousand square feet, let's say, they subdivide it to four thousand.
But that has, that has nothing to do with the density bonus law that we're talking about today. That's a separate law that was actually heard by the commission last month. We'll actually take that to council next week.
Okay. Anyone else who should speak?
Just one more. So for example, we recently, within the last couple of years, approved through this commission, the Milton Manor project over on Milton. So that was three, R-three zone lots being developed as one unit. Would something like that then not be reviewed by the Planning Commission?
I would have to know, no, that one still could be because it involved a lot merger, I believe. So whatever, if, if a project has various sections, like maybe the residential, like, would only qualify for development view, but they need a variance. Well, the planning commission still hears the variance, so you would hear the whole project. So whatever is part of that, the highest review authority that would normally hear that item would hear the project. So if we're doing, it was eight units on an R-four property, no, you're right, the planning commission wouldn't hear that. If it was something that involved a tract map, a variance, something of that nature, the planning commission would still hear it.
Well, these affordable projects get like unlimited waivers and unlimited concessions, so.
They get, they get unlimited waivers, concessions is limited, depending on the affordability component.
Yep, and I was going to say, not necessarily just an affordable project. They've got to meet the minimum affordability to kick you into the density bonus law. Well, I have seen projects where they provide affordable without asking for anything, just to the goodness of the developer's heart.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers at all?
I have no speakers, Chair.
Thank you. Close the public hearing. Any motion?
I'd move as recommended.
I second.
Roll call.
I have a motion made by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Chair Hamadi, for the Planning Commission to recommend approval for case number two zero two five dash zero two two three to the City Council and adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, recommending that the City Council approve zoning text amendments, case number two zero two five dash zero two two three, to repeal and re-adopt chapter seventeen point five seven zero, affordable housing density bonuses, and amend section seventeen point five zero zero point zero one zero, authority for land use and zoning decisions relating to density bonus law, and amend section seventeen point seven zero zero point zero one zero, definitions of the specialized terms and phrases of the Westminster Municipal Code. I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Number nine, there's none. Number 10, selection of Planning Commission Vice Chair. Any nomination?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Casey.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Okay, I have a motion made by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Wolpert, I believe it was. Oh, Chair Hamadi, I apologize, to appoint Commissioner Wolpert as vice chair. I'll go ahead and call roll. Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen? Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Thank you. Reports? None. Matters from staff? Anything?
Yes, Chair, we have two items we'd like to, one, we'd like to pose a question to the Planning Commission, another one is just a follow-up. We do not at this time have any, any items for the November nineteenth meeting. If the commission would like to cancel, that is fine with us. Otherwise, we could bring something informative to the commission if you would like some kind of informational session, but we don't have any items at this time.
I think we should just wait till December.
I make a motion to cancel. Go for it.
I second.
Okay, I have a motion made by, Vice Chair, or I'm sorry, Vice, Vice Chair Wolpert, seconded by Chair Hamadi, to cancel the November nineteenth Planning Commission meeting. Sorry, Commissioner Wolpert?
Yes.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Yes.
Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Tran?
Yes.
Chair Hamadi?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero.
Thank you. Second item? Do you have two items?
I've got something else. I got, actually, I forgot two other things to bring up with the commission. First, for lavender, we did get notice that the alcohol license has been transferred. So the new owners have the alcohol license in their name now. They've continued to work with the city as far as permitting the new kitchen. The lavender pickleball, which is under similar ownership and similar management, has done a soft opening. So that part is operating and so far, I'm supposed to go for a tour. I need to get in touch with them so I can let you guys know what it looks like on the inside, but so far we've heard good things about that and we are pleased to provide you with the lavender, the entertainment venue has been working with us to move forward. Second, just so commission is aware, there has been an issue with bingo licenses that we have corrected. I don't know if it's come up to the commissioners. I know it's come up to council members, so I'm informing you. PD was issuing all our bingo licenses. There was a misinterpretation of the code that's been clarified. So we will not be allowing per code venues to host bingo. The point of that code, and if you read it, it says, first of all, you have to be a nonprofit and a nonprofit has to run the game. Farther back in the code, it says that any games have to take place on basically property that is used by that nonprofit. So it wasn't made for somebody to go to the Sizzler and have a bingo night. It was made for your church or your school to run an occasional bingo game out of their multipurpose room. So we have worked with PD and code enforcement to revoke any licenses that were issued incorrectly. And going forward, we will be only issuing to nonprofits that own or lease a space where they normally do business. You can't just lease an empty warehouse and show up once a month to do bingo. It has to be like an Elks Lodge, a church, a school. Those will be the only businesses at this time eligible for bingo.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I have a question for Ken on the lavender. When they did their original paint job, they had the circus look with the lavender, the stripes in the white. So is that going to be all solid now?
It will be all solid. They are waiting till they do some interior work so they can have everybody come out at once to fix that. But we have, we made them apply for a zoning clearance for the exterior paint. We are only going to approve a solid color for that roof.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to number thirteen. Matters from the Planning Commission, including AB one, two, three, four. Does anyone have an announcement or comment that they'd like to share?
Yeah, I, I have something, Chair. I'd like to ask staff. I was at the mall a couple of weeks ago and at that point, the mall is now closed. Penny's is gone. They're, they're closed up. So I don't think there's any retail activity, there's no, I guess, licensed activity at the mall at this point. And, but there seem to be uses coming into the mall. The mall's being utilized. And one is the Sears, upper parking lot of the former Sears is now, looks like is being used for a truck, a truck marshalling yard. And then on Bolsa near Edwards, there's some other, looks like some other commercial truck activity. So is, is the city, has the city permitted this or is this something that's under investigation? What's the status? Because the mall itself, it looks pretty derelict and then you add these additional activities, it makes it even look worse.
We would not permit a use like that at the mall. It's not, even though the mall is closed for all intents and purposes, they still have to abide by the plan that runs the mall, which is currently the Westminster Mall specific plan that wouldn't allow for trucking. I am not sure what the, if there's an investigation, I would have to check with code enforcement. I can do that and I can get them to look into it if there is no open case.
I thought they had the own security over there.
Well, they may have security, but they also may be, since they know nobody's using the parking lots, allowing.
Better off send the code enforcement, let them check it out.
So I can, I can have code enforcement look into that if they're, if they don't already have an open investigation.
Okay, could you then send out an email to the commission members and let us know what the status is once you get something?
Yes, I can.
Thank you.
Great. Anyone else? No? Okay. Adjourned, adjourned at six forty one. Thank you. Next meeting will be what, December? You let us know. Okay. December third? Okay. Twenty twenty five, thank you.
I haven't asked quite the finest, it's not part of the meeting, so if, if you do have any checks, please cash them, they're trying to clear the books for the calendar.
Do you want me to sign anything for a lead? Okay. All right.